Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council's legislative session, 50th May, 2018. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 o'clock. Mr. Patrowski, please do the welcome.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Madsen?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Present, thank you. And Ms. Green is excused for the evening. Moving on to the communication, Mr. Madsen.
Yes, as we are all aware, there was a tragic boat capsizing incident.
Oh, I'm sorry, my mic's not on, I'm sorry. Thank you, excuse me.
Within the last 24 hours, and three individuals were involved. Cody Binkley, who was found and is recovering at the hospital. Unfortunately, he did lose one person, Mary Brenner. And Carrie Binkley, who was three years old, is still missing. So, I'd like us to take a moment and give our thoughts and prayers to all the families involved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I wanted to announce that the city council had an executive session today, and it was to discuss legal issues. Also, the work session that's scheduled next week will be canceled, and the legislative session that was originally scheduled for May 20th, I mean, I'm sorry, May 22nd, will be rescheduled to May 29th. Moving on to communications, this evening, we have an update on Capitol area transit by Executive Director Richard Farr. Mr. Farr, would you please come to the front? Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome. Thank you, thank you for having me. Wanted to get an opportunity to sort of just bring the council up to date on the happenings of Capitol area transit. I've been on board since February 1st. I actually spent a good share of January in the facility and in working with the staff up there. So, there are some really, really good things and some things that are not so good, and I'm just going to kind of run down through some of those items, if that's okay. So, we have been spending a lot of time looking at the inner workings, and it's sort of slowly, in a, hopefully, a logical process, beginning to tackle some of the issues. The customer report process was poor. The first thing I heard from all of our customers is that we make a complaint and we never hear from you again. And so, we've instituted a new system that tracks that. They have seven days to close them out, staff, and every report that's made gets a follow-up from staff. So, we are touching every consumer who makes a complaint. And like all complaints, some are legitimate, some aren't, and some are happy with us at the end, some aren't, but we do go through that process because that's the right thing to do. So, we've instituted that. We modified our website. We now have an email address, info@cattransit.com, so individuals can email us directly. We have a web portal where you can fill out a form, a complaint form, and it's tracked. And again, all of those, we respond to within seven days. We've implemented a safety program. One of our goals for CAT is to join the SAFTI, State Association for Transit Insurance. All Class III cities in the Commonwealth are members of this insurance pool, except for Harrisburg. The self-insurance pool offers a lot of benefits. If you have good times, you get your money back. I think it's important that we do that, but there are some requirements that we need to go through to get to that point where we can be accepted by that insurance pool. So, we put in a new safety program, new tracking, new training, and things are really going well. We're seeing the numbers begin to go down. I call it trends in training. It's important that you watch the trends, and then you train the operators and maintenance staff where you see negative trends, so we can reverse that. And things are going well. We're going to be implementing an SMS, a Safety Management System, where you get feedback from the employees. We're in the early stages of that. And we've had two onsite visits from the Transit, Transportation Security Administration, excuse me, the TSA. So, one of our goals is to make sure that CAT is up to speed when it comes to security at the national level. We want to be performing at that level. So, we've invited them in, and we're going to be doing some training with them, as well as some tabletop drills, to make sure that we're ready. So, we revamped the entire new hire program, developing a refresher training program, which was not in place before. So, once you were trained, if you were there for 10 years, you never really did receive additional training. There will be mandatory refreshing training every year on different topics, based on a quarterly process. We're having our first company-wide training. It's on ADA, how to use securments, wheelchair securments, how to do stop announcements, basic stuff, but all very, very important. If you rely on that every day for transportation, we need to make sure that we're doing that properly. And so, that will be a company-wide, and we're bringing in some national professionals to help us with that training, to make it really top-notch. So, that's the good stuff that we've done since February. I think we're making great progress. Some areas that we still need to advance is, I think, our maintenance costs. When I look at it on a statewide basis, we have the highest maintenance cost. Why? I could tell you, we have good maintenance, which is good, that's a safety feature, but why is ours so much more than everyone else? We need to figure that out. I don't know, but we're going to find out. So, we're working on that. Our run-cutting process in transit, it's how you take all the legs of the system and put it together to make work for the drivers, is flawed. I don't know why. We're working through that process. I have a lot to learn. I first have to learn where the bus goes. I don't even know where the bus goes yet. But we're working through that process. This evening, I was coming through the transit center across the street, and the driver waves me over, and she said, "Do you know I do eight different runs in my day? I do this piece, and then I go out here." If the driver doesn't repeat their run, they don't become proficient. They don't know the customers, they don't know where cars pull out in front of them. It's very important that the driver operates on the same sort of route as much as possible, and I'm not sure why we don't. The rest of the transit world does. And so, we need to work on that. They sound kind of small, but both of those are really big pieces for us to tackle and figure out how to make that better. In January, I had the opportunity to sit in what they call their Morning Transportation Operations Huddle Meeting. And I've been watching this for years on the Twitter feed, the number of routes that are canceled every day. We leave people stranded every day. Public transportation publishes a schedule. That schedule is a promise to the community that you're going to show up at that time, at that location. We're not fulfilling our promise to this community. We will. What I discovered is when you factor in the number of pieces of work you have in a day, the allowed vacation time that we provide our employees, and a normal rate of absenteeism for illness, we're 10 to 14 drivers short. That's why we're missing that. There's a flip side to that equation, and I'll talk about that in a moment. I'm working my way from really good to really bad, and you'll see how the trend progresses as I move through this. So, one of the other things that I discovered, and I think they knew this for a while, but it's sort of, I feel like it's an archaeological dig that I'm on, trying to figure out how we got to this point, but I'm projecting that we'll end this fiscal year 700,000-plus in the hole, in the red, with no real foreseeable way out, without doing major service reductions. Now, I say that because that's the worst-case scenario. Our goal is, you know, we measure our success on the number of miles, hours, and passenger boardings. Having service reductions is not what we need. It's not what the community needs. We need more transit, not less. And so, we have to figure that out. Maintenance costs, you know, our labor cost is the third-highest in the state, except Pittsburgh than us. That's kind of excessive. And then, there's a big gap. We've got to figure out why these things. It's the history, some of it's legacy, but what can we fix, and how can we make those improvements? We are looking closely at the administration. We are eight positions less than we were three years ago. I think we're getting close to the point where we're probably maxed out on the number of positions that, and they were filled, they just weren't filled through attrition. When people left, they just simply weren't filled again, so there weren't any layoffs. But I think we've reached a point where I don't know if we can have any more savings in the administrative area. We're getting pretty lean in that area. But, so, I thought it's important that I let the council know that we have a big hurdle in front of us that we have to work through. I think that it's sort of raised its ugly head now because we get formula funds every year from the feds, and ideally, you would be spending, this year, you would be spending last year's money, so you're always a year behind, and they have done that, and now they're using this year's money for this year. And they're catching themselves up where they're running out of any opportunities to be creative, if you will, on that front. So, we're working through those issues. It's not great news. There are some great news. We're really changing, and I think in a year, you're going to see it really be a different system. We have to figure out the financial piece. I don't have solutions yet, but when we do, and any challenges or any major initiatives we're going to have to deploy, I will be back here before they are implemented, so you're aware of what our actions and our intentions are as we move forward.
So, you've not had any layoffs?
We have not.
Okay.
They did that service reduction, and the intent was to lay individuals off. And I had to explain to the board, not only can you not lay off those people, you need to hire more because you're still understaffed. So, that helped. We did see a reduction in the number of missed pieces of work, but we're still not there yet. We are allowed to hire part-time people through the collective bargaining agreement, and there were no, I guess there was one part-time individual, so we are looking to add. Those new positions are part-time. So, it's not a full allocated cost. The benefits aren't there for our part-times, but that will help us meet the demand.
Okay. Any questions, council members? Mr. Johnson?
It's not necessarily a question, just someone happened to contact me today in regards to, I guess, a bench that went missing on 15th and Hur, and I guess they were trying to figure, I guess they've been dealing with it for a while now. I guess it was, originally, it was there right by the CAT bus station, but then it was removed. They don't know who it was removed by, but I guess it's causing people to not use the bench, but use our front porch to kind of sit and wait for the bus. So, I know, I think she may have called the city, and she may have resigned a CAT at one point in time. I don't know if you were there or not. But in the event of like those public space benches, is that more of, is that a CAT function, a city function? I didn't really know the answer to kind of tell her, or if it's really kind of a united front.
I don't know that answer, but I will find out that answer. We will research that and see what we need to do to fix that. Yeah, providing benches, if you don't do that, they will use somebody's front stoop, and that makes us unpopular.
And then, my next question, and I don't know if you necessarily had to answer this, but maybe the administration can answer. I know we approved some study, the bus stop optimization study. Do you have an update of where we're at with that?
I can attempt, if no one else has that. I attended my first meeting of that. I have read the study. We are partnering with Tri-County, well, I guess it's the County Planning Commission, not the Tri-County MPO, but the Planning Commission. There's another study that they're doing to help with other route information, and so, the data that we're pulling from that is the missing data that we need for that. We don't have it by stop. And so, we're going to have some interns, starting in a couple of weeks, ride those routes and count the ons and offs at all those bus stops. That's the piece we're missing for them to take the study to the next step. So, I think you'll hear something probably in a month or two that's sort of going to jump forward quickly.
Okay.
Mr. Allen?
Your budget year, is that fiscal?
It is fiscal.
So, in terms of some of the things you're talking about, in terms of trying to address some of the financial difficulties and kind of the approach to it, when do you think you'd have a better understanding in terms of how to meet those obligations going forward?
Well, I know that there is a board member sitting behind me, and he has not heard this news yet, so he's hearing it for the first time. Under the Municipal Authorities Act, we are not required to have a budget or a balanced budget. In my professional career, in 25 years, one other time, I presented a unbalanced budget to the board for adoption. I expect to do the same this year. So, the answer to your question is, I don't have that solution yet. We know the shortfall. We know, what's great about transit is you have the formula fund, so you know what's coming in.
Right, you know what's coming.
So, it's never a revenue, it's an expense issue. So, we have to work through those quickly. And so, yes, that's a big question.
But you think, I mean, is this something you want to, I mean, if you're filing fiscal, I'm assuming you'll probably have to have something in order before you get to the July 1 date, correct?
Well, we will end the fiscal year with a line of credit.
Okay.
A balance on the line of credit.
The 10 to 14 drivers short a day, have you worked out a solution as what to do? Is that a daily, is that a daily routine every day? Is that a daily occurrence, I mean?
Yes.
So, what are you proposing to do as far as that, to cut the shortage?
Since I've been there, we have added five part-time drivers.
Okay.
And there are four more in the pipeline going through. The training process is about six to seven weeks, depending on the individual. So, the lead time, once you hire them, before they can get behind the wheel, it takes some time. But I stopped in this afternoon, and I said, "So, how's it going?" And they're like, "We're feeling the relief of the pressure already of filling work with just those few part-time."
And how many drivers do you have?
We have, so total, we have 97 full-time, and so, with the five plus the one where I had six part-time.
Okay. Any other questions, council members?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Madsen.
Do you, one of the biggest hindrances for people entering the workforce is reliable transportation. Do you coordinate with the career links, or have any type of working relationship with them on that issue?
My history is yes. Have I had that experience here yet? No. We have had some meetings with different key partners in the region. We worked with Ames Manufacturing across the river, Community Aid. So, we have, we've had some strategic meetings with, you know, key individuals, but not on the broader sense of making those bigger connections. But that's something that we will do. It's just the nature of transit, or at least it should be.
Okay, thanks. Sit for me.
I know you guys partner with Hershey and Tamey Resources in regards to updating those routes during the summer season. I guess you guys are having a press conference. We got a notice from Bob saying a press conference in regards to that.
That's a very impressive operation, something that I think that the city and CAT can be very proud of. There are boardings that exceed 120 passengers at one time getting on the bus. That's pretty impressive. And so, what's great about that, I think, you know, when you look at economic development, all of those students who are working at Hershey Park are living here in the city. So, hopefully, on their off time, they're spending their hard-earned money from Hershey Park downtown. So, I think it's a great benefit, and it's a really a great program.
Okay, any more, any additional questions?
I just wonder, I think you're for kind of doing this work. This is, we really don't have reliable public transportation, and it's valuable for every day from childcare to getting to school, getting to work, and the turnover cost for our high for our population. But I do think you do need to work on some community outreach, because I think CAT's reputation is so poor that people don't even think anymore, right? And that means you're not identifying problems, spots, any new problems that are coming up that could be, you know, stopped before it becomes bigger. So, I think you, I don't know where you're finding, but you do want to have, figure out a way to reach people who would be consumers. I think also, since the route changes have happened, a lot of people have just kind of assumed they can't really use CAT anymore. So, you have to do something to attract people to CAT again, especially when you have ones who were already using them before, and they're just not using, you know, paying their coworkers, that sort of thing now. So, I think there's a lot of work you have to communicate in with residents.
Absolutely. Lamada Metro in DC has had its fair share of transit woes, and they have created a program, something Transit Tracks or something like that, and have went public with, here it is, this is the issues, and here's our plan and our timeline to address it. Next Monday, not next Monday, the following Monday, we are having a joint senior staff retreat between the York senior staff and the CAT senior staff, and our plan is to do just exactly what you're saying. We are going to develop a fixed CAT plan, and we're going to take it public with, these are the things that you've told us, that we've heard, and these are the things that we want to do, and hopefully, the timeline that we can do it in. We have to earn the trust back of the community, and we're going to work really hard at doing that. It's going to have to be transparent, and it's going to be painful for our part, because there's going to be things that we hear that we don't want to hear, but that's how you fix things.
And I think, you know, you mentioned DC. You do want to work on some kind of system compared to both New York and DC, because I have, my metro pass for both DC and New York, because I go there so often. So, there's like, you know, $45 tied up in DC, and maybe $30 something tied up in New York in your system, but I can't do that here.
Well, we are sitting on a federal grant of $1.3 million for fare collection technology. It's been an active grant for about five years. Why? I don't know. We are currently developing specifications, and I hope to be on the street with a new fare collection system as early as next month, something that could be deployed as early as by the end of this year. And my hope is, is that it'll be, it will put CAT in the same playing field as far as fare collection technology as all the other transit systems in the region. So, my hope is that we can begin launching a regional fare card that can be used in Harrisburg, you know, CAT system, Lebanon, Lancaster, Berks County, as well as York, because they're all, will all be on the same fare boxes. So, you know, that'll take some coordination. That's not going to happen immediately, but it at least puts us on the same playing field with no more punching when you board the bus. Everything will be electronic. So, hopefully, by the end of this year, we'll be in a position to make that announcement.
That's wonderful. Any other questions, council members? Well, thank you, Mr. Farr. I look forward to hearing another update in another couple of months.
We'll definitely do that. I left my business card at all locations.
Yes, I do have your business card, and I-
My email address is there.
Sure.
Feel free to email me. I tell, you know, please tell your constituents to use the info@cattransit.com, but if you have an issue with a constituent that you need me to address, please use my direct email address for that, and I'll respond to that promptly.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming and giving us an update.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Moving on, courtesy of the floor. Anyone in the middle, like to come to the mic? Anyone to my left? Very well, thank you. Moving on, approval of minutes, council members. Approve of the legislative session minutes of April 24, 2018. If there's any omissions, deletions, corrections. Hearing the municipal standards approved. Moving on, a report to committee. Report from Chair Allen on the work session of May 1, 2018. Mr. Allen, are you ready with your report?
I am, yes.
Thank you.
A report from our work, well, I can't talk. Let me start over. A report from our work session held on May 1, 2018. There's actually two resolutions up for discussion for budget finance. However, Asha Green handled the one as part of the public safety update. So, Resolution 47 of 2018 was also up for discussion. This is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a payment processing service agreement with value payment systems for electronic payment processing services for the city of Harrisburg. As many of you know, the vendor that we previously used went out of business, therefore disrupting our ability to have online payment processing service. So, they did issue an RFP, went through the process, and selected payment processing service, I'm sorry, selected value payment systems. The nice thing about the new service is actually will cost less for our residents, so this is a major positive. So, I certainly encourage my colleagues to vote in affirmation of this resolution. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A report from Chair Green on the work session of May 1, 2018. Ms. Green was excused tonight, and she asked me to read her report. At the workshop session held May 1, 2018, council had a discussion of Resolution 51 of 2018, a resolution approving a third proposed 2018 budget reallocation. This included the budget reallocation for the 15th Street Public Police Substation. Council members voiced concerns about the total cost of the project, having increased from the original proposal, now reaching over $1 million by its time of completion. Council members also had questions if this money would be better spent towards a new public safety building, and if this precinct would fit into the master plan of the city's policing efforts. The project manager, Mr. Woolby, assured council members that there was a process that was ongoing to look at the overall master plan of policing in the city of Harrisburg, and that this building was in the long-term plan. Commissioner Carter also informed council and the public about the decrease in homicides in the area since they had increased their police presence in the neighborhood. As a chair of public safety, I would encourage my fellow council members to vote in favor of this budget reallocation. Also, there was a presentation from the police department about general public safety in the city. The police department provided council and the public with information regarding traffic-related cases on the State Street corridor that has been a great concern due to fatalities and incidents recently in the area. The police department also provided council with information about recent crimes in the area, including cases involving the seizure of guns and ammunition, car thefts, and assaults. During the public comment period, there were citizens who voiced concerns about the enforcement of food vendors downtown after 1:30 a.m. The police department said that there have been several meetings held with the local businesses' owners on Second Street, and this issue has been addressed and would continue to be followed up on in the coming weeks to ensure that everyone was in compliance. There was also concern about parking in an area that was affected by the passage of the free parking after 5 p.m., because this section was permit parking only after 7 p.m. The mayor addressed this incident and issue, letting the citizen know that new decals had been ordered for the parking meters to inform people that it was permanent parking after 7 p.m. There was also a citizen who had concerns over being ticketed for parking on the curb, especially during street cleaning time. They stated that several cars had been damaged due to the street being too narrow, that if they don't park partially on the curb, they are often hit by other cars. The citizen also noted that during trash day, if they don't park partially on the curb, the garbage truck would be unable to pass. The information was gathered, and as the public chair, I would agree to follow up with her after the meeting. And that's the end of the report for Ms. Asha Green. Moving on to report from Chair Majors on the work session of May 1, 2018. Mr. Majors, are you ready with your report?
Yes, President Williams.
Thank you.
May 1, 2018, Public Works, during the work session, Public Works Committee had a presentation from the Department of Public Works on the Sanitation Ordinance, Bill 3 of 2018, where they discussed the significant changes that are included in the bill. Those include increasing fines and penalties. We're going to do some increasing enforcement of illegal dumping, changes to our recycling program, the creation of a waiver of fees for vacant properties, and moving to an annual billing process. The presentation was provided, and a meeting has been scheduled for May 16, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. to do a public hearing within the community so that we can continue to provide them with updates on the status of this legislation prior to a vote that will happen in, late in June. Additionally, we had Resolution 53 of 2018, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Community First National Bank of Manhattan, Kansas, for the purpose of financing a lease purchase of two Mack front-end loaders. These are new loaders that are going to be utilized by our Public Works for sanitation. This is something that we had discussed previously. The financing is in the amount of 500, excuse me, $584,114.58 for those trucks as a part of us updating our fleet vehicles, and I would encourage members to support this resolution. Additionally, there was a discussion on Bill 4 of 2018, an ordinance amending Part 5 of Title II of the Codified Ordinance of the city of Harrisburg entitled Environmental Advisory Council to Establish the Terms of Service and the Process for Appointing Initial and Succeeding Members of the Reorganized Environmental Advisory Council, EAC, to increase the number of members of the EAC and to permit the participation of non-voting city personnel and officials in the EAC board matters. There was discussion amongst, between the administration and council regarding the number of members and who would have appointing authority due to us not being able to reconcile some concerns that were brought up during that meeting. We have asked to table this legislation until a later date, and we will be reaching out to the administration to have a meeting to discuss this further, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to ordinance for first reading this evening, we had none. Moving on to ordinance for amendment this evening, we had none as well. And then, moving on to ordinance for final passage, we have none. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 47, 2018. Mr. Patrowski, please read that into record.
Resolution 47 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to- It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a payment processing service agreement, Value Payment Systems LLC, for electronic payment processing services for the City of Harrisburg.
Questions and concerns on Resolution 47, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 47 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 51.
Resolution 51 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2018 budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 47 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 51.
Resolution 51 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2018 budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 53 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 51.
Resolution 51 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2018 budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 47 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 51.
Resolution 51 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2018 budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 47 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 51.
Resolution 51 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2018 budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Calling them.
Pardon me?
I was just going to say, calling the vote for Resolution 53.
I was, I was. I'm calling Resolution 53 as amended.
All right. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 53 as amended passes.
Thank you, Mr. Patrowski. You can give me a chance to vote, to say yes, and then continue.
Drinking monster.
He's moving quickly.
He's moving. Moving on to Resolution 54. Please read that into record, Mr. Patrowski.
Resolution 54 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution ratifying a lease purchase agreement with Keystone Government Finance Incorporated for the purpose of financing a storage area network and five Cisco servers.
That would be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution 55.
Resolution 55 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into an agreement of sale with General Services Administration for real property located at 648 and 650 Boyd Street, Harrisburg, PA, in lieu of eminent domain proceedings.
That's also would be placed in Building and Housing. Moving on to Resolution 56.
Resolution 56 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Community First National Bank of Manhattan, Kansas, for the purpose of financing a lease purchase of six dump plow trucks.
That would be placed in Public Works. Moving on to Resolution 57.
Resolution 57 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution affirming the City of Harrisburg's participation in the Sustainable Pennsylvania Communities Certification Program.
That would be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to 58.
Resolution 58 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Chris Dawson, architect, to provide architectural services for master planning, as well as Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA accessibility upgrades and other renovations to the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Government Center.
That would be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 59.
Resolution 59 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Central Pennsylvania Building and Construction Trades Council, AFL, CIO, in support of cooperation to assure properly trained and skilled workers shall be available for certain future major public construction projects.
That would be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, is there any old business that you would like to address? Hearing none, moving on to new business. Any new business? Mr. Majors? And I'll go to Mr. Johnson.
Again, I would just like to announce the meeting, a public hearing on May 16, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at the Public Works Facility. We'll be meeting to discuss Bill 3 of 2018, the sanitation ordinance, and-
Okay.
Oh, and one other thing, just another reminder that leaf collection has begun again. If you bag your leaves and place them on the curb on street cleaning days, Public Works started back up on May 1, so our Public Works folks will be bagging up any leaf collection or yard waste pickup.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Major. Mr. Allen?
Just want to remind everybody that next Tuesday, May 15, is primary election day here in Pennsylvania. Can't reiterate enough the importance of getting out and exercising your right to vote. Of particular note is, we have a pretty competitive congressional race in our district for once, so I encourage everybody to get out and hit that button.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I attended a community meeting, I guess, last week. One of the concerns, it was in Midtown, one of the concerns was in regards to the Third Street project, and seeing if the city could provide a little bit more updates into, for possible street closings involved when different things are taking place. I guess, I know our communication team sends out emails in regards to different street closings throughout the city with UGI and everything like that. I think they're just searching for a little bit more, I guess, Third Street project related, where traffic has to be detoured in regards to see if we can improve communication in that area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Allen?
Kind of as a follow-up to that, I had communicated a little bit via email with Wayne Martin as part of the construction efforts. It appears that, I think, that the plan and the deal was for lights to be out on one side of the street. However, in the last two nights, lights are out on both sides of the street from Forest or up to the market, so it's created quite a dark environment. I have not followed up with Wayne, so if someone could just convey, we were communicating back and forth on that. He wanted me to see if that was happening. It is happening. It seems like both sides are dark for about four or five blocks. So, if someone could just convey that to him, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else?
President, just one issue because of the short notice. There is a publicly advertised zoning board hearing tomorrow night that has been canceled. There was only one item on the agenda. The applicant had withdrawn the application, so just if anyone who was planning on attending hears or sees this, that hearing is canceled.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. Anything else? Oh, Mr. Majors?
Oh, yeah. I'll just, so on May 10, at 6:30 at the Martin Luther King Baptist Church located at 1243 South 18th Street, the City of Harrisburg in Capital Region Water will be doing another public meeting to, on the Five-Site Development Project, to discuss the impact to the community. The topics will be the playground and green infrastructure impact on the City of Harrisburg, and this is in reference to the Cloverly Heights Playground. So, that, again, that is Thursday, May 10, 6:30 to 8 p.m. at the Martin Luther King Baptist Church located at 1243 South 18th Street.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have one announcement. There would be a Power of Women Fashion Show on May 26, 2018, at the Crown Plaza Hotel, and that's 23 South Second Street. And that's an event to bring women from the City of Harrisburg, this community together for a day of fashion and fun. I'm encouraging all the women to come down to the fashion show. The price of the tickets are $35, VIP is $50, and there are open booths available for vendors at $100 apiece. It's being given by Desiree Ortiz. Her number is 717-608-0346. And Tia Walker, her number is 717-425-3637, and tickets are still available. Again, that's May 26, 2018, at the Crown Plaza Hotel. And I encourage everyone, all the women in Harrisburg to go. It's going to be a wonderful event.